Hey, thank you. Wait a minute. What is this? Safari's telling me. Did somebody call in? No. Anyway, okay. Good. This meeting is being recorded. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Mission Springs Water District Study Session of June 17, 2021. Back into our boardroom for the first time since March of 2020. Yay. Anyway, so I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Grasha.
Here.
Director Duncan. Vice President Martin.
Here.
President Wright.
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Yes, we do. Okay, rules of procedure. Mr. Pinkney, I see you there.
Yes, I'm here. According to the rules adopted by the board, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Director should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the president as the presiding officer. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. In order to ensure the orderly progress of board meetings, the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Public input. Do we have anybody on the line for public input for items that are not on the agenda? No, no. Okay, so we'll move on to Human Resources report. Wow, look at this. We have a lot. Arden?
Well. I think, can you hear me?
I.
All right. I, you know, we have no real significant timeframe that they're here, the five, 10, and 15. However, we have some anniversaries. I can't believe Victoria's been with us for two years.
I know.
And Alexander Nine has been here four years. Wow. We got some promotions and we've got certifications. And we can go over these again on Monday. And our new hire is Joseph McElroy. And we'll, we'll not much more that you can say but that. Got to congratulate him.
Does our new hire come from another district? He's a collections operator, too.
Yes.
So if he's new and he's.
He did. But Danny could answer that or or.
Monday. Either one. That's fine.
Sam?
I read where he came from. Coachella, are the Desert Community Facilities District or something?
I was from Valley Sanitary District.
There you go. Valley San.
Valley San.
There you go.
Oh, that's right. I did. I did know that. God, now that you mention it. Yeah.
Yeah, their recreational district.
Yes.
No, Valley Sanitation. Sorry, Valley. There's another Valley. Never mind. It's Valley Y. Never mind. The sanitation district is Valley San. Okay, so we will move on to item number seven. Public hearing will be on Monday for the resolution to establish water standby assessments. And I might as well mention number eight, which are the assessments for the sewer standby.
Yes, both of those are something we do every year. This amount, of course, diminishes every year as they sign up. It, you know, there are, there are times that we build these water lines prior to Prop 218. And we have certain vacant lots that fall and will be served by that water line. And so we established a standby assessment because we still need to maintain those water lines. And so that they're ready when they do develop that property. So that's what this is about. And every year we need to go through this where we, we establish these standby assessments and.
Put them on the property tax.
Yes. And collect, not establish, I should say. I should correct that. And in fact, when you see on the agenda, you will see. And JP, you can correct me if I'm, if I don't get this exactly wrong. And seven and eight on the action items, we have to establish water standby assessments. And John Pinkney has told me that not really establishing these, those, they've already been established. And of course, post 218 needs to, needs to have a vote by the, the property owners, and that hasn't happened. So there is around 250,000, 237,000 on the water standby assessments and just 15,000, 13,000 on the sewer assessments. So standby fee.
Just add what Mr. Wallam is saying. The standby fees were established a long time ago. They were established pre Prop 218. And really what you're doing by resolution is fixing, levying, and collecting.
And these are also this, this, the cost to do this is actually paid for by the assessment, too. So it's no cost to the ratepayers. But it is something that we need to do this time every year.
Doing it every year that I know of since 1988. This was established way before me, these, this fee. And when 218 came along, we stopped putting them on the tax rolls.
We're just fixing, levying, and collecting and authorizing that.
Yes. Dory, do we have anybody, if anybody on the line to speak on any?
Actually, I did have a member of the public just join the meeting.
That's what I saw.
Janet Lawson, are you here to make public comment or are you just observing?
I'm just observing. I'm a reporter with the Desert Sun and I'm just listening in because I'm ending up covering most of the valley's water districts.
Welcome, welcome, Janet.
Thanks.
Okay, so any of the board have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, so we'll go to number nine. Public hearing for the resolution to adopt the 2020 Coachella Valley Regional Urban Water Management Plan. Mr. General Manager.
Yes, Victoria will have a presentation and I'll hand the gavel over to her. There the and I, you know, when this started, I reluctantly agreed to do this valleywide. This is the first time we've done a valleywide urban water management plan. I've ended up being very pleased so far with that. It seems like I'm, you know, I'm going to reserve comment until I see how it works out. But by having a valleywide urban water management plan, we basically standardize or institutionalize the requirements for all of the districts across the valley. So nobody can say, hey, why is it that CBWD does this, DWA doesn't, or DWA does this, and MSWB doesn't? So with that, I'm going to let, now we've also, before I hand it over to Victoria, want to let you know that this, you've seen this on the agenda several times or more.
We've had several, several times.
Right.
Steve Ledbetter has presented to us. That's what we're voting on today. It's the stuff that Steve Ledbetter has been presenting to us at many of our board meetings.
And we'll bring this all together and Victoria will, will go over that in her presentation. So Victoria, the floor is yours.
Thank you, General Manager. I actually am planning to do the presentation on Monday. And that is when the public hearing is scheduled. However, as the general manager mentioned, this is the first time that all of the valley agencies have come together to do a regional plan. And as mentioned, we have aligned close to all of our water shortage contingency action levels across the board, which is a great feat and achievement. So that way it's, it's truly a regional effort, especially in the event of a drought, which most likely we will be facing here. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or I'll take them now and answer them Monday in case you have any after reviewing the packet. But I'd like to reserve the presentation for Monday if any public attends.
Okay.
You, you all do have an electronic version of the document. It is a little too thick for us to really print out.
Well, it's, it's in our packet. That's one of the reasons our packet is so thick. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And then your question.
I just wanted to mention, as President Wright, you addressed, Steve Ledbetter from TKE Engineering has also provided presentations, I believe, the last two to three months as the discussion item related to the plan and the water shortage contingency plan. And so a good majority of the plan should not be new or unfamiliar. But please let me know if any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have to look at, I have to look at you guys now. I'm looking for everybody on the screen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, item number 10, resolution addition of delinquent accounts to county tax rolls. I had some issues with this, but go ahead, Arden.
Okay, we actually, by law, are required to do this. Water Code says that these need to go on. The delinquent accounts need to be transferred to the county tax roll. And this is just our process of doing that. And I, with, I think what I'll do is, Brian, who did, do we, we have?
Arturo.
Arturo, can you go into this now, how we're going to do it? We are going to provide you with some information that I think you might all like to hear. Go on. Did you have a question?
Yeah, we're a quick question. If it's required, why do we have to adopt a resolution?
Because the, the law says that we have to go through this hearing to let the people.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's what the Water Code says.
Okay.
It says we shall put these on the delinquent tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Tax rolls. Okay.
So Arturo is going to do a presentation. Okay, go for it, Arturo.
Good afternoon, Madam President, distinguished members of the board, management staff and public present. I will be giving a quick presentation on the 2021, 2022 delinquent accounts that are being sent to the County of Riverside property taxes. First, let me begin by saying that we have been working with customers. We continue to work with customers on all delinquent accounts up to the date that these have to be sent to the county. And I will give you that data in a later press, a later slide. First, why are we doing this? Like Arden, the general manager said, it is required by California Water Code to send these amounts to the property taxes. And here it reads, shall be added to and become a part of the annual taxes next levied upon the property upon which the water for which the charges are unpaid was used and upon the property subject to the charges for any other district services and shall continue a lien on that property. That is the reason why we have to do that, to recover the costs associated with those charges for actual water that was used by those customers. Additionally, part of this year's property tax amounts that are going in total include the back charges for sewer for customers that have connected but not did not inform the district and have been using the water, the sewer connection but have not paid on that. And also the government code is that states that is 338 that says that within three years we have to collect those amounts and also go after the, the customers as it is considered at the end of the day theft.
Arturo, we have three years to do that, huh?
We have to go back three years. Correct. Now, keep in mind, several of these accounts have been connected for over three years and we will not go back and charge those customers. Some have been there for a couple of more years over the three years. And so, you know, they're getting already a break. And so we are also working with these customers. So, you know, in, in a couple of slides, I will show you what we've done to have them reach out to the district.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
So how many of these are new additions that would or could be considered COVID-related? Or are we doing this year's delinquencies?
That's coming, that's coming in another slide.
Okay, great. I thought so, but that was the, that was.
So to answer your question, here is the number of delinquent accounts. Total delinquent for the current year is 651 accounts of the 13,475, the accounts for the district that amounts to 5% of total accounts. And of that, 1,113,000 is the delinquent charges, which include late fees. And on the top of the slide, you can see what makes up those 651 accounts. To answer your question, Director Grasha, that number is included in number four, the no payment over 90-day accounts. And we have been reaching out to these customers in particular since the pandemic began and going back to 20, the February of 2020, when all of this came down. So we have been doing an outreach and we already have reversed delinquent charges or late fees of 228,000. Additionally, this number, the written off, is different from what shows up on the director's packet because these have already been written off from the books. We do not have to do anything with those. And so that needs to be provided also to show that the district is working with customers. And you can see the percentages on the bottom as to what makes up those accounts. But primarily, those related to COVID is in that number four.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next slide, the, of the 651 accounts, 56 are for sewer back charges on customers who connected to the sewer and failed to inform the district of the connection. As you remember, the code, the government code that allows us to do this is section 338. Customer Service has been doing a great job reaching out to customers in not only sending a letter but also calling and receiving great feedback. Because as you know, if we work with customers, they call us, we will not be sending these amounts to the property taxes. We are creating a payment plan to avoid them having to deal with this on their property taxes. That, this is a letter that just went out to the customers. And now we're in the process of calling them to alert them of these amounts. Finally, on the actual delinquent accounts, as you know, this primarily came from the COVID-19 pandemic effect on our customers. And not only that, but the state's requirement that we do not close any delinquent accounts. That was part of the reason why those charges have gone up from last year. Throughout the pandemic, we were working with customers beginning February of 2020 through the direction of the board. Social media posts, digital ads were sent out to encouraging customers to call and request a payment plan, to request the bill assistance support as well. In March of this year, Customer Service began calling customers with delinquent accounts, following up with a letter to tenants and owners, in addition to the already procedures in place to inform account owners that their tenants have a deli, delinquent account with the district. So these are the several types of information that have gone to the customers in addition to what they already see on a regular basis. And finally, the deadline to submit the property tax amount to the Riverside County is August 10. So if we hear from a customer between now and then and any other time prior to that, we have been working with them and removing them from the list that is going to the county. I am setting them on a payment plan so that they don't have to worry about this again on their property tax statement. If they, any customers reach out to a board of directors directly, please forward them to Customer Service, myself, the general manager, and we will definitely work with, with them and establishing a payment plan so that they don't have to worry about these charges on their property taxes. That is a main concern of our customers and we are definitely working with them right now. That concludes the presentation and I will gladly answer any questions.
Yeah, I got, I got a question. So what are we doing to try to get grant monies to offset these costs to these people? Because I'm looking at these, these one-time things that are going to go on people's property taxes. And they're never, a lot of these people are never going to be able to, to make this up, to, to catch up with what they owe on the water board. But I do know that the governor's budget is supposed to have $1 billion when it comes out in it for this particular thing. Are we working on that kind of stuff to, to see what we can do to help offset these costs for these people?
Absolutely. And I will defer this question to Victoria, who has been more abreast of what is going on and how we are going to go about getting this help for not only customers but for the district.
Well, that particular billion, I believe, would be going directly to the district, whatever we can get out of that. It's based on that, some of it's based on that survey that the State Water Resources Control Board sent out a few months back, or maybe it was even the end of last year, or anyway, it was beginning of this year, about this very issue, asking districts, how much were, did they have in, in delinquent bills and stuff like that? And did we fill out that survey? I think we did. I think I saw her name on that. And they're going with that. That is what, what I was heard. So, but I think we really need to stay up and, and get a hold of the State Water Resources Control Board and make sure that we don't miss our opportunity to help these people. Because, Gus, some of these, we're talking 2, 3, 4, $5,000. You think most of the, our customers are going to be able to make that up? I didn't know about that.
Correct.
Some of them are already in $50,000.
Correct. In addition to getting information and working with the county, we're also working with the state. In fact, we met with a grant writer about a week ago in relation to going after the state and how we're going to apply for those funds. We did fill out that survey and that is what Victoria has been doing and staying on top of throughout this whole time. But we are definitely, that's, we're, there's no way we have, we can miss this because it will be a great help for our customers.
Great, thank you.
If I may, President Wright and Arturo, we are definitely keeping our finger on the pulse, whether it's state funds and how that governor, that $1 billion, how, how that's all going to come down. Also, if you recall, as part of the federal part of the American Recovery Plan, excuse me, as part ARPA, as part of ARPA, they do have a program for the low-income water assistance. And so the formation of that program has also is, is getting some parameters. But that program is customer-initiated. We're waiting to hear a little bit more about the governor's program. I will say we are, Mission Springs Water District is a part of the Riverside County Water Task Force. And we are actually a part of the work group of that task force. So I guess a little subcommittee that's working directly with Community Action Partnership of Riverside County, the Executive Office, as well as EDA Economic Development Agency regarding, specifically regarding customer arrears. And so we are meeting with them monthly and letting them know where we stand. If you recall, last month, I believe, or at the very end of April, we signed on to a letter with the Riverside County Water Task Force as a direct ask to the County Board of Supervisors as part of their ARPA funds to consider a direct allocation to water districts and what their outstanding balances were. And that, that was a separate survey to determine where everyone stood.
In addition, we're also, as you know, those total delinquent charges include late fees because there is such high concern and through direction of speaking with several board members, those amounts, when they go to the county, will be, those late fees will be removed from those accounts. So approximately 300,000 will be removed from that total balance in addition to what we're trying to do for the customers.
And we're working as well with Supervisor Perez's office. We've met with his chief of staff and other board member, staff members, just to let them know where we, as Mission Springs, stand as a county water district. Also, there is a development. So United Lift is one of the programs that is providing rental, rental and utility bill assistance. And of course, that's specifically to renters. But there is talk of a homeowner bill or homeowner assistance program in the works. And once our delinquencies go to the tax roll, right, it's not that they're no longer qualified for assistance, but right now, what's really integral with Mission Springs being a part of this task force is that we have a seat of the table to ask, you know, and, and really consider our customers and those that will be facing water liens on their property. And asking, you know, if the program requirements could include that. So it's, it's definitely still an ongoing effort. But just want to let you know that we are definitely keeping our, our ear to the ground for the benefit of our, of our customers, of course. And as a disadvantaged community, we definitely want to consider their needs.
I have a question.
Just second. That, that's great. That's great, Victoria. And, and Arturo, I'm glad to hear all that, just so we keep up on that because I think that's going to be real important. We are considered a disadvantaged community, so we probably would, you know, go to the top of the list when, when we put our applications in. Yes, Director Grasha?
Yeah, you know, I've heard this discussed at a couple of other forums, I think, a couple of other water districts. And one of the concerns that I've developed in hearing it is that the, and I want you to correct me because I'm, I'm hoping I'm wrong. So I hope you can, because, because my, my impression is that we will get backfilled for all of this loss, but we will likely, there's never been any mention of direct assistance to the actual debtor. In other words, we'll collect the 600,000 or 800,000 that we have lost, but the homeowners, as the, as this legislation is currently in, in the form it currently is in, they won't be credited for their, for, for, for what they're, are in their arrears for. So I, I want to be clear that if we are, if we accept.
I think you can stop there. I don't think that's the way it's going to go.
Well, I know, but I've heard two different agencies suggest.
That would be ridiculous because.
I understand that.
It's for the property owners.
Right, but it falls exactly in line with so many other things that we see government getting away with.
I haven't heard.
And I want to make sure that we're not participating in that kind of.
I would too. I would too. And I, and I.
I think, yeah, Victoria has actually researched this. And, you know, there is some question as to whether it's state or county or local. Most of the, the, most of our money that went, that has gone up to 20,000. Usually it was about 5,000 a year. We started that program with the United Way, as you recall, seven, eight years ago. And and then the, now CBWD and DWA are doing the same thing. And the, right now, it's $100 for the customer max. We may want to raise that to $200, but that's different than what with this, if this funding does come through. And I don't know if you want to elaborate on this, Victoria, or.
Well, I'm, you're, you're highlighting some very small debtors. I'm thinking of people that owe 10,000 or more or thereabouts. And, you know, we're going to get that money, but I want to make sure that it's understood that this board doesn't support accepting that money and then continuing to ding those that suffered the most. And I hope that we figure that out in a way that.
Well, I didn't hear that we couldn't.
The problem is, is, you know, how are we going to distribute that? And I don't, Victoria, do you want to comment on this before I go down any?
Sure. And thank you, General Manager. So right now with the programs as they stand, we, so the customer applies, it's all customer initiated to the program, whichever program it may be. They provide a copy of their bill, whether it's water, internet, trash service, any sort of utility. And then let's say United Way of the Desert, for instance. They then work with us or even United Lift to confirm, you know, what the region, what the past due amount is. Some of the programs will cover the entire past due. Some will cover up to 500. And then as Arden's mentioning, the Help to Others, we cover up to 100, and that's funded by us. It is a direct payment to the agency, but of course, it's all like streamlined back to the customer account. And Arturo, if I'm incorrect, or April, please let me know. The future programs that are all in development would still be streamlined in that manner, as I understand it. So far, I haven't heard of, and I, I need to look up some of what President Wright is talking about for possibility of direct payment to the agency. But it would, I mean, we would all link that back, as is my understanding, to, to the customer.
Right. Well, my, my concern is that you highlighted certain levels that people would be credited, but there's no that, if a guy owes, say, $5,000. And you're going to credit him five hundred, so we're collecting the full five thousand, but we're only, you know, and I want to make sure we don't go down that road.
I do too, Steve, so don't, we'll, we'll make sure of that.
Well, you say those things, and then you go back to your kitchen table, and things tend to, tend to change, so let's stay on top of that, thanks.
I'm the one who brought this up, anyway, okay, so any other questions?
Um, I had more of a, just a thank you to Arturo and April and Arden as well. I've had quite a few customers call in that are struggling, and they've done a great job helping them get on assistant programs and, um, payment plans. So thank you to them, and then for Arturo, uh, thank you for the presentation, it's a lot more descriptive than the, uh, few pages we have in our packet. Is that something you could email to the board, just so we have it for our record? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so then we'll go on, we'll move on to, um.
Madam President.
Yes.
Before we move on, Russell Betts has joined the call, Mr. Betts, are you here to observe, or would you like to make public comment?
I would like to say something if I could.
Regarding, uh, for public comment, or regarding an item on the agenda?
I guess, well, the discussion that just took place, I had a question, actually, regarding the, um, any funding the district might get regarding, uh. You know, helping ratepayers, just following on that conversation, so if it's time for me to make that comment now, or?
Yes, no, that's good, that we can stay on this, uh, we're still on number ten, we can do it, yes.
Okay, and, and thanks for the, thanks for the quick access and easy access to board meetings, this is wonderful. Uh, so the question I had, and I'm not clear on, is if the agency is going to take in a bunch of money from the Fed somewhere. Or whoever's providing that funding for rate relief, is the agency just getting like maybe two percent or five percent for administration? And the rest must be passed on to the water customers, or does the agency use that money to absorb losses that it incurred?
It's my understanding that the money that would come, uh, from, from the billion dollars that's in the governor's budgets, what I'm talking about. And that hasn't been signed yet or passed yet, but this is, that, that money would be based on how much, how many, how much the delinquent. Um, the delinquent number is, like this one point one million. And it was, it was my understanding, and I don't know how that's going to work, but it definitely would go back to the customer. And if we, and we probably wouldn't get a hundred percent of every single one, but let's say they owe three thousand, and we got two thousand of their three thousand. The two thousand would go to them, to, to that, to that account, that's the way I look at it. I can't imagine us collecting money for accounts that don't go to that account, we would have to have each account say how much was going to it. Probably in the process of the application, that's what it might be.
Okay, and I understand, you know, like to say to you guys.
Proportionately on how much they owe, sure. Anyway, so, that's all stuff that'll work out, and I, and, and I, and I, I brought this up and started this conversation, because I wanted to make sure. Um, that we were going after these grants that will be coming to us, and the reason why they're coming to us was so we can credit the accounts. That's the state's idea, so.
Okay, wonderful, thank you very much, and, uh, I'm going to sign off now, but I did have that question, and thank you for answering it.
You're welcome, thank you, thanks for chiming in. Okay, no other comments, I'll go to number eleven now, the budget. That we have had several me, I had a nice meeting on, um, due to some rude, um, comments and whatnot, we cut the meeting short. Uh, the, the board was asked to contact the, uh, the, uh, board, the general manager and whatnot, and Arturo, if you had any questions. So, um, here's your time again, if you need to have any questions, so.
Uh, yeah, Arturo, did you want to, um, say anything and go, and we do, you also have a board. A budget report, too, that came in.
It's in the packet, very nice.
To you.
Yes.
Some of the things, so I'm gonna let Arturo have it from here.
Um, sure, hi again to, uh, Madam President, distinguished members of the board, management, staff, and. Public present, uh, this will be a brief summary of the budget that was already presented on June ninth. Um, and once again, it's just going to go through the, the numbers, so i- if anyone else is here that was not, uh, the June ninth meeting. Can review the information. Um, as you remember, the key budget assumptions were that there was no rate increase, uh, there were several grants and loans. Particularly with the wastewater regional plant, uh, there's three new positions included in the budget. And a three percent revenue, uh, increase, uh, primarily due to water cells and wastewater treatment. The budget summary, uh, again, is a operating revenue of nineteen point nine million dollars. Which is composed of the water sales and sanitary sewer charges, uh, total budgeted operating expenses amount to eighteen point six million. And capital improvements in the amount of thirty three point five million. Keep in mind that not all thirty three million will be paid directly by the district, and will be covered through grants and loans. Uh, this will cover it and will be covered in the next few slides. First, I wanted to go into the operating budget, uh, which includes the three new positions, uh, two in engineering and one for information technology. Um, that is a main reason for the increase in salaries, wages, employee benefits, and fringe benefits. Uh, one item to point out is the public employees' retirement prior year costs. Uh, that how, that was fully paid off in the year, in the current fiscal year. Uh, finally, other major expense items are for outside services in relation to the capital projects. And other district operations, and, uh, finally, utilities. As the district continues to provide water for the residents of Desert Hot Springs, the costs associated to provide these services keeps increasing. Uh, and those are what the costs are for the district.
Uh, Dory, just to let you know that the, at least on our screen, the pictures are covering up part of the slide. On the right side, all the pictures are.
The participant pictures?
There we go.
There, thank you, yes, now it's, are, oh, are you do, are you working this, Brian, okay, thanks.
Sorry about that, I missed that.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Finally, we're going to go into the detail of the, uh, capital jobs. Uh, the first few slides are of the already approved and ongoing, uh, jobs and appropriations for the district. So that's, uh, the first and second slide, and the next one is, uh, primarily the, um. The new request for the year, um, and once again, here you can see of the thirty three million dollars expected to be spent in the current year. Um, of that, seven point two, point three are expected to be grants. Uh, and loan proceeds to cover that with an actual expense of fourteen million dollars to the district, uh, with out-of-pocket cash. Now, keep that in mind, because last year, the, that number was forty million, and the expected net cash outflow for the district, excuse me. Was sixteen point eight million dollars, and year to date, that amount has only been four million dollars. Um, and again, these transient costs change as the projects continue. Um, and they will continue to change once the projects, um, actually break ground, as you know, that, that's, a lot of the costs. Are changing, especially right now with, uh, COVID, uh, effects on the economy.
I have a question, why this page is still up?
Yeah, Arturo, hang on.
Or, or true, can you, okay, that page right there, um, I, line item, one twenty-four, one twenty-five. Computer hardware and programming slash software, is that for the new, um, iPhone meter compatibility? Billing system?
That is for normal operations of the district, uh, that is what we need to do, the software updates to, uh, transition over to. Office three sixty-five, everything that you see that we did throughout the pandemic to keep the district going. Uh, is included in some of these jobs, and if you look at the prior year, that was also included for the prior year. Uh, for line item ninety-nine and one hundred. Out of the forty thousand and seventy thousand, only seventeen, six hundred and fifty-two thousand were spent. Um, and again, that is just to keep the district going with the, um, software and computers. And all the programs you have to keep running, from the different departments, from accounting to engineering to customer service. Uh, we have to keep on top of this with the customers, because the customers expect these, um, ways to, to communicate with the district and to make payments. So that's what.
But, but I think Randy's asking is, where did we budget the money that was for the, um, the. The customer portal and the, and the metering?
Yeah, the app for the iPhone and stuff like that.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's included in, uh, other projects, and I'm not exactly sure what numbers they are, but they are. Um, they have been already included in prior years, uh, I can send you the, the exact number, um, later on, but I do not have that up the tip of my finger.
Probably included in the meter replacement, the Neptune contract that we.
Correct.
Yeah. Budgeted in that.
Looks like it's number seventy-seven.
I have a follow-up to that.
All meter system? AI, AMI means.
Five million, five hundred thousand, and that will be included in there.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Arturo.
Sure, I have a, a follow-up to that.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Director Duncan, for pointing that out, because I missed it, um, I, what impact is this going to have on the. Work, workstations throughout the district, is this a, uh, a new computer for everyone, or what, what, what? What, what's really involved in this, uh, seventy thousand dollars with the hardware, workstations, or, or? Can you tell me, that show?
Says programming.
Uh, that's the, the normal, uh, charges that we have to do for all the changes we, we're doing in technology. Uh, from Laserfish that we're implementing to store files electronically. Uh, and also to provide customers with copies of their invoices, going back to, uh, I believe, ten years. Uh, we need to find, uh, a way to store them and provide them at the, you know, at a click of a, a, a mouse. Um, so that's all that's included in there to keep those projects going, in addition to the equipment. And, uh, and materials that are necessary that are included in that computer hardware. Uh, from a laptop to the iPads for the, uh, the field, um, to their cellphones. That is what's included in there for.
So, is everybody getting a new iPad and a new laptop, what, 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 what exactly is the impact here? What, what do you get for forty thousand, do you get five workstations, or do you get one for everybody?
Uh, no, this is directly from the, uh, IT consulting firm that gives us a budget of what their expected expenses are. For new software, upgrades to the software, and any new employees that they're going to have to purchase a computer.
I see, so this is really not for what, this is, this is for the contract, the contractor, this is going to the contractor. We're not buying, uh, uh, equipment that we're going to own, is that what you're saying?
No, no, it is for that, however, we get that budget from them, because they're the ones who know exactly what we need for the following year.
Okay.
We may not spend only a portion of that.
I can provide you a detail of that.
I, I, I don't want to sound like I'm against everybody getting a new computer, but I want to know what really is happening here. Uh, so, I mean, if you need them, I, I, and I, I'm not suggesting that you're doing something you shouldn't, I'm just, um, that's a lot of money. Um, in addition to the contract that we already have with them, and I think we're getting ready to approve a new employee for a position anyway. For, that's another, you know, how much are we going to spend a year all in on? On, uh, this, uh. Technology, we'll call it, IT, it looks like it's closing in on a million dollars if. If, if I'm not mistaken, and eight hundred thousand, maybe.
What are you, I don't.
Well.
You're looking at bits and pieces here, President Wright, this is seventy thousand, forty thousand, and then we got.
Would you go back to the slide that showed you how much we used this last year out of that forty thousand, and that seventy thousand that we budgeted for last year?
Right, right here.
Where'd it go?
Four thousand nine twenty-three.
It was seventeen thousand for one of them, I don't see it on here.
Oh, I'm sorry. This right here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what we spent last year out of the forty thousand and seventy thousand that we.
Right.
That we budgeted, we spent.
But my point is, that's not all we spent on IT, we, we, we paid that, we wrote a check to, uh, to them this month for over twenty thousand dollars. I'm trying to get an idea what the, oh, what we're spending entirely on our, uh, technologies, uh.
Okay, well, maybe we can have that answer on Monday.
Because that's not, you know, it's busted up into so many pieces here that you, you don't really get a full understanding.
To answer your question, that is the, the reason why we need an IT person to come and tell us what we need on a yearly basis. We are guessing, uh, on some of these numbers, particularly with something like that. As an accountant, I cannot tell you what we're going to need for technology for next year, but I can surely guess, based on prior expenses. A IT person coming in will definitely give us that number and can be more accurate going forward.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Time, there's never been a time in history where we are going to jump into the technology world more than it is right now. We thought it was in the past, and it escalates in an exponential form, but let's, let, let me make one thing very clear. Not everybody gets a new computer, some, if they, if somebody needs a new computer, it breaks down. Then this cost will be, will handle that, it's, we budgeted forty thousand, thinking, all right, that should be enough. If we have someone that needs a computer.
I, I just, I, I just got caught up with the hundred and whatever thousand we approved last month. For what I consider to be IT, and then we have the contract, and I don't recall what that is with, uh, the, the contractor, the Oomtech, I guess. It's the name that rings a bell, so, um, anyway, I don't really want to hold it up, I just want to know, hey, we spent this much money. Just to, just to be able to communicate electronically with our customers, and, uh, you know, it, it, what is the number at some point would be nice to hear. In the months and years going forward, thank you.
President Wright, can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Clarifying question, Director Grasha, when you're asking about technology, uh, we also spend it, you know, SCADA improvements and things like that. Would you like all of that to be included, because that?
Well, I don't know, that, that, maybe, I mean, you know, that's internal certainly, and important separately. Um, you know, not everybody in the agency has a SCADA, uh, data port, or I don't know how that works, but, uh. Or access to that equipment, I hope, uh, I hope that's very limited, but, uh, the, the agency can't operate without that. We can't operate without any of it, so, it just, yeah, that would be, that would be good to know, hey, we spend a million dollars just to, just on, um. Dots and zeros, and so, you know.
We'll do our best to bring that to you on Monday, because that will also include like the website, the website, and some of the other things that we've done in the last twelve months. So yes, we'll put a comprehensive report together and, and try to break it down, so you can see the different components of that.
It doesn't have to be all that much work, too, it just, you could just say, we spent, we're going to probably spend this much, like, I don't want you to do too much work, I know you're overwhelmed over there, but. Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Arturo, I, or you can keep going now.
So that concludes the presentation of the, uh, budget portion of the, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten. Uh, that includes the operating and capital budgets, and now I'm going to go into the appropriations, uh, limit for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, as you know, the appropriations limit is another way that the state ensures the water districts do not go overboard on the way they use and spend resources. From customer fees, the state provides guidelines on establishing an appropriations limit in the amounts it is allowed to spend for the year. Uh, this res- resolution meets that, uh, state requirement, and the total for twenty twenty, uh, two amounted, uh, to a hundred and six. Uh, million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Wow.
If there is, uh, no questions, I will move on to the next, uh, part of the budget, which is the classification plan for the district. Uh, and this is the number of employees, pretty self-explanatory, uh, between the executive administration, finance, operations. For a total of fifty-two employees, uh, which that number was twenty-nine prior to this presentation. Um, on, on the, uh, classification plan for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And I, that concludes the parts of the, uh, budget that require, uh, a resolution of the twenty twenty-one dash ten. Twenty twenty-one dash eleven and twenty twenty-one dash twelve, and I will answer any additional questions at this time.
I, I have one if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, item C, I realize I'm comparing apples to oranges here, but I, I hope I'm in the same, in the right ballpark. This employee classification plan is not based on what I hope is a current going class comp.
No, we're going to do a class comp.
Have you, has that been started?
No, we're having a workshop on, on it, starting, and I think I asked this question the other day, that as soon, if we, as soon as we adopt. Whatever that would be, then it would change.
Then it would affect this, okay, so this isn't based on, all right, oh, okay, thank you, Arturo.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, my, I have a question, let me see, there's a, a graph on page three thirty-seven. Is it rolling? No, the, the page is, is, is that the budget?
Um, way down the bottom of my hand pointers, page number she's talking about.
Item eleven.
Three thirty.
Oh, you're right, it's item eleven, nevermind, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Oh, we are on item eleven, okay, item eleven, page three thirty-seven. It's a graph to twenty twenty one water rate comparison. Is that, is that I am the right? Pardon?
Three thirty seven is seven twelve.
Some of your page numbers may be off in your packet.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Because I'm looking, what do you think? I'm not still have the same thing you guys. Anyway, there's, there is, and so if I'm on number twelve, it says I'm number eleven.
Yeah, that would go, I'd take three thirty seven would take us back.
Uh, correct, and, uh, thank you to Assistant General Macy, General Manager Macy. He prepared, um, the budget report, which is, uh, something we are providing, uh, going forward. It, it's a more in-depth report, uh, not only for the district, but for, uh, agencies outside of the district to see what the, what we're doing in a more comprehensive way. Um, and I can let him answer this particular section of the twenty twenty one water rate comparison to the other districts in the area.
I, I see. So you know which graph I'm talking about is that's an item eleven according to my.
Yeah, Arturo, can you bring that up?
Am I in the right, uh, a number, right, for this, uh? This graph, what I was going to ask on the, the graph, it's got yellow and blue and it's the comparison between Chocotella, uh, Coachella Valley Water District, Mission Springs, DWA, uh, and all of our different rates. And it looks like, let's just pick between Mission Springs and DWA. It looks like that Miss, the DWA used, gets less water for more, costs them more money for less water than Mission Springs. Mission Springs looks like it gets more water for less money. DWA looks like it's get less water for more money. Am I reading that right? And is that blue mean that the DWA used less water than Mission Springs? I don't.
No.
No, that's not what that means, right?
What that is, is you have the blue is the usage rate, which is the usage of water with the, with the meter would record. And the base rate would be the meter charge. So you're looking at a comprehensive total bill, but I broke, we broke it down as showing, uh, what the meter charge is or the monthly fee with there's no water going through the meter versus then across the top, it talks about our average usage here at the district. Uh, district wide is thirteen CCF or, uh, thirteen hundred cubic feet of water. So what we did is we then took that amount of water through each of the other districts and calculated the usage rate in blue. And then in orange, the base rate or their meter rate. So.
Okay, so, so what that means is like desert water agencies', um, base rate is more than our base rate.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes.
Yes, and it's a bigger percentage of the total bill.
Okay, we're just, because to me, I, I thought that's what it meant, but then I thought, well, does it mean that DWAs, uh, that they use less water? But no, that's not what it means. It means that they.
Now, this is all using thirteen CCF. So they're all, they're all equal in water use.
Same amount of water. Okay, okay, thank you. I don't think I probably read that, but I was just looking at the, the graph. Okay, anybody else have any questions? No? On the screen? No, okay. So if we don't see any, any other questions, I'll move on to item number twelve. Professional service contract with TKE Engineering for the design of the Horton wastewater treatment plant tertiary effluent filtration system.
All right, well, I'll let Danny provide you with the details, but, uh, I'm going to briefly, in my introduction, mention that I did bring this to you. I ask, uh, I'm going to ask for forgiveness more than permission because I needed to get this project going. Uh, it's essential that we get these filters in place so that we can get our, uh, recharge, uh, system going. If, if by not having these in place, we have, uh, it, it's kind of problematic for our, our, our recharge ponds. And, um, this will help. And so we want to get this in place sooner than later. And, uh, so, um, we've actually started this project just to let you know. And I, but I did announce and discuss it with you at the last meeting. We couldn't make, we couldn't discuss it. And I did present it to you, okay? And with that said, Danny, do you want to go into this?
Gladly, Arden. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, to adding to what General Manager Wallen stated, this was presented in, in a general manager's update a couple of months ago. We were treating this project as an emergency. The staff report in front of you today is formatted as if we were asking for this approval today. But as Arden stated, we already awarded contract under emergency basis. As me, as we've reported to the board in the past nine to twelve months, we've been experiencing a lot of average daily flows at the plant. Uh, in our pandemic update, the Horton Regional or the Horton Wastewater Plant has seen what we call weekend flow, where regardless of whatever season we're in, weekend flow generally is higher. There's a lot more people coming to town, but with, with the pandemic, every day seemed that, that we were dealing with weekend flow, higher flows every day with people working from home, staying at home, not leaving our community. So it's not any news that the district's been dealing with percolation rates or, or issues with our percolation rates at our ponds at the Horton plant. This project, as Arden mentioned, is for the design of though the tertiary treatment filters, more commonly known as cloth effluent filters. It will be a process that will filter the effluent, secondary effluent that currently goes straight to our ponds. It'll be a filter that goes in between that, cleaning up the process of the, or removing in this case, the suspended solids that are causing some of our problems today. Some of our problems today that we're dealing with is we're having to pump down our influent, uh, pump station because of the de-ragging of our, uh, influent pumps. There's a many things that are causing the upset in the quality leaving our clarifiers. So this process started in twenty twenty with a, uh, preliminary design report. And that report was looking at cost of effectiveness, feasibility. And then it ended up being something that we brought to the board at mid-year. And all, what we're asking today is, as a formality, consideration of approval of a contract with TKE for professional services for the design of the Horton wastewater treatment plant tertiary effluent filtration system in the amount not to exceed one hundred and one thousand, two hundred dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
One. This, this being a tertiary treatment, Danny, does that mean if we find a customer, we can sell that water? Or does it still need to be parked?
That's a great question. The, the bet, the added benefit of this project is it sets the groundwork for future tertiary or future recycled water. There are other components or elements to Title twenty two water or tertiary water, recycled water, where there's a coronation, a decorination. This is a, a big step in that direction. We would have to provide coronation chambers and storage for us to have that infrastructure to convey that to the end user.
Okay.
Staff has spoken that likely if we were to ever really move forward with tertiary or recycled water, the Horton plant would be, is, is the location is closest to the majority of, of the end users, if you will. I would take that water. So this is one large step in that direction.
Okay.
However, we are capable of, uh, percolating that water, that effluent as it is. We refer to it kind of as a secondary effluent. But what Danny's saying is this takes us part, partway to the tertiary level, but not completely there. So, but nevertheless, we don't have any place really to use that, reuse that water right now. No, no golf courses or anything in place and infrastructure. So what this does essentially for us is, is help us with our percolation rates at those infiltration ponds.
Yeah, and I realized you gotta, you gotta have pumps, you gotta put the plumbing in, you gotta have a customer willing to buy it, yada, yada. I understand all that, but, but this is a step closer to that, if it is.
Yes.
Okay, good, good, okay.
I may, that's a good, that's a good point, General Manager Wall. That is a step. This is not the primary step or the driver for this project. If you recall in, at mid-year in January, the, this project has the, will, will ultimately reduce our hours over fifty percent of the amount that are required to go into these ponds and maintain and rehab these ponds for them to be reused for. They, they're filled, they are allowed to cycle down. And then when they cycle down to, to, to empty, staff goes in there in a, they rework it with a tractor and clean it up. These, this effluent filter project will minimize almost, we estimated over fifty percent of, of labor hours having to maintain these ponds. So the added benefit, as Arden stated, is for now, we're going to put a great, a greater quality water into those percolation ponds.
Nice, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, uh, curiosity, I know the golf course south of the plant is in Coachella Valley Water District's district, but, uh, they, in a recent meeting, that came up regarding that plant, not in, as it reflect on us in any way, but there was talk about that being one of the golf courses in the CVWD that would likely never be able to accept their reclaimed water. And, um, it occurs to me that they're very close to our plant. And I, 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 I'm going to assume you guys have had some dialogue that might have, uh, they might have turned your nose, their nose up, uh, uh, in regard to selling them water. But I, at some point down the road, I'd like to hear, uh, what the, uh, possibilities are or why we're not, uh, interested in pursuing that.
Uh, okay, um, let me respond. Yes, we've had, um, a number of conversations with them. Because they are in CVWD's territory, we, we haven't moved forward with it. And, um, you are correct. Um, and so, uh, we are, we are open to using our effluent here. That is the, the, one of the primary places that we could, um, provide reuse water. So, um, we are, we are talking to them about it and they're very interested in it. Uh, and in fact, they are also in a good location, if there is development there, for us to serve them by gravity with our regional plant. So if there is development around the, uh, that golf course, um, we're capable of providing, you know, treatment um, to the, of course, to the west. Um, but then the economy didn't quite do what it was supposed to do and it went down. And they've kind of dropped their, uh, their, their need to do it. I think Pulte Holmes was the original one that was just, you know, deciding whether they wanted to build around the
Pulte?
Golf course.
Markel was the name of the owner, guy to be, that, that built the golf course and the development. He lived in Mission Lakes, yeah.
Pulte Holmes was the last.
But when I was serving on the county's, uh, municipal advisory committee, uh, I met the new owners, the Canadian company. Um, and yeah, that was a big push at that time. That was in about two thousand and twelve, I guess. And, um, I, I, I was, uh, not considering that, uh, the, the, the water sales part. I was thinking more in terms of water in the golf course. So, uh, but all your great points and, uh, and interesting, uh, thing to think about in the future. Thank you.
They're, they're very interested in using our effluent and we have talked to them about it.
Okay, item number thirteen, I believe, we're, we're go to professional service contract agreement with SoCal Land Maintenance.
Um, this is our landscape service, um, and I'll let Danny, um, get into this. And, but the only thing I do want to mention is that this isn't just for, I think sometimes we make the mistake that this is just for the administration building. These people take care of all of our facilities, including the fourteen well sites. And Danny, do you want to, um, go into this? I don't want to take your thunder away from you.
Appreciate it, everyone. Thank you. I'll, I'll be glad, I'm happy to do that. Again, as Arden was saying, as General Manager Wallace said, and on an annual basis, we go out and do a bid process for our landscape services. I mean, that's what we are bringing to board today. That we submitted bids back in May of twenty one, five bids, sealed bids. They range from seventy four thousand, one hundred up to two hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. That's, that wasn't a misread, that's two hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty. The SoCal Land Maintenance is the low bidder, lowest responsive bidder. As Arden was earlier, thirty six locations, including this campus, all of our well sites, reservoir sites, the Horton plant. They do irrigation repair, they do tree trimming, they do all of our landscape services from the far west end of our district to the far east end. The only site that they don't do is our desert crest plant. So we are, unfortunately, we have Sanderson Landscape is second low bidder. They are current uh, landscape contractor today. We have had a successful relationship over this past year. But what we're asking today is for the board to give consideration for a contract agreement to SoCal Land Management for Irrigation Maintenance and Landscaping Services for District Facilities for not to exceed amount of seventy four thousand, one hundred. We're also asking for that to have a ten percent contingency totaling eighty one thousand, five hundred and ten dollars for a period of one year. I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, just to, to add again, um, Sanderson is the one doing the work now, but they were outbid by five hundred dollars. So we're going to go with the lowest bid.
Question that you, you probably can't answer. Of the five bidders, four of them are within ten thousand dollar range. And in New Life Landscape, I mean, it's just out. Did, did they misunderstand the bid by chance? Is that what happened or are they just that far out of the market? And I don't know if you can answer that or not.
Well, I can't, Danny might be able to expand on that. I have.
Did, did they misread the bid or misunderstand it?
They have a lot of work, maybe. They have a lot of work and they don't need it.
Yeah.
Danny, I'll let you answer that.
Certainly. Uh, I don't have the exact answer, but from experience, there's a lot of new companies. I, I, I can't say that for, for, for an exact item for New Life, but a lot of new companies, and we've had this from our janitorial services and, and things like that. They throw it out there and they miss it. They don't miss the actual scope of work. They just are trying to get it and it's a good exercise for them. I don't think this is a, a, a matter of somebody has too much work and they're just going to throw it out there. If they have got too much work, they're not going to spend the time to put together a proposal. It happens. A lot of people, we've seen this before.
Yeah, they just throw it out there if they get it. Wow. They get it, great. If not, oh, well.
But it's, it is, the first three bidders are very close.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any, uh, Dory, we, I see we have maybe a public member would, uh, they, they like to comment on any of our.
No, Madam President, they're just here to observe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to number fourteen, professional service contract agreement for Southern California Fleet Services.
These people do our maintenance and repair. This has nothing to do with the actual leasing or anything. So Danny, you want to explain what's happening here?
Certainly. On an annual basis, we bring this contract to the board. This is for Southern California Fleet, uh, Services. They do our maintenance from our small equipment to our tractors, to trailers, any piece of moving equipment. They are also, uh, uh, you know, in addition to our routine maintenance, they also take care of our bit inspections, our, our regulatory inspections that we have to with our smog and the things that we have to do for reporting. Arden mentioned our fleet and they happen, so our current fleet program, the cost that we pay per month covers maintenance. SoCal or Southern California Fleet Services happens to be the contractor that does this service for Enterprise Fleet. However, this contract does not cover those costs. This, this contract covers a lot of our larger maintenance and repairs of our loaders and our, our backhoes, our dump trucks and, and all, all the other equipment that is currently still owned, that hasn't transitioned out in this fleet program. As we work through our five-year program with Enterprise Fleet, the larger percentage of our smaller trucks, thirty five hundred and smaller will, will be almost all leased. Therefore, on an annual basis, this contract will be reduced. We're not quite there yet. We thought we were going to be there this year. Uh, the, the nice part about this contract is it prevents us from having to take any of our facilities, any of our, our equipment out, dropping them off into an unsecured local mechanic shop. It also allows them to come to our facility after hours. We're not having to give up vehicles or having to go ahead and rearrange schedules so that we can catch a ride. This is, it's been a good service for the district. And we are asking the board for consideration to approve a contract agreement with Southern California Fleet Services for the, to perform the maintenance and repairs of all district vehicles and equipment for not to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars for a period of one year.
Thank you, Danny. Uh, do I have any questions on this side? Any questions on the, the? Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Danny. We'll go on to number seventeen or fourteen, fifteen. Acceptance and kind of, we're kind of, trying to help you out, all right, get ahead of there. Acceptance of grant, uh, of easement deed for public water utilities easement.
This is, this is similar to the standby assessments. We really have two. This is, this is similar to the standby assessments. We really have two that are different, but they're related and we're getting.
Another grant is number seventeen, uh, sixteen, fifteen and sixteen.
So I'm gonna let Danny explain this to you. This is essentially different easements, different way we're handling it.
But, but same idea. Okay.
But.
And I'm sure Danny's doing both of them, right?
Yeah, Danny.
They get Danny fifteen first and then sixteen. Okay.
Sixteen and then, yeah, fifteen and then sixteen, Danny. Okay.
I will do it in that order. Sure. Uh, Dory, if you wouldn't mind, please, could you pull up the graphic that I, that I asked you to come on for me, please? In your packet, there are items that, that will give the distinction of these two easements. They are the same property for fifteen and sixteen. The highlighted parcel that is in, and it's on the screen currently is a cannabis project. The project to the southeast, which is a lot of cleared land, happens to be the Cochelon Cannabis Park. Uh, the road between the highlighted parcel and the Cochelon is Eighteenth Avenue. And item fifteen, the acceptance of grant, uh, excuse me, acceptance of grant of easement deed for public water utilities easement um, from Maggie Raghe Hannah, who is the development owner for Plaza DHS. The item you see in your packet is, there are two cul-de-sacs. So starting from the bottom of the parcel, there's a shorter cul-de-sac on a right-hand side and a longer, deeper cul-de-sac to the left-hand side that's shown in, in the packet exhibits and the grant of easement deed. In the track map or the final track map, which would, would, would provide us easements, this particular easement was not part of it. There is a connection between those two cul-de-sacs that allows us to have circulated water for, uh, for better fire flow and water quality. As a, as a requirement that the plans that were designed for this project show water lines going up ea- each of those cul-de-sacs. And then at the end of them, this easement that's, that's being discussed in item fifteen is for the water line that connects the two ends of those. So this is a typical process that happens when we do any type of new work on a track map. In order for us to be on this property, to own, operate, maintain, to be there in the beginning of the construction for inspection, this easement is required. So the developer is presenting this to us for acceptance so that we can go ahead and commence the start of construction. If I may, can I, without having to, I can come back to item fifteen. I'll go right into sixteen.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the same parcel that, that's in question at the very bottom, happens to be the Eighteenth Avenue, as I mentioned earlier. The pipeline in Eighteenth Avenue is currently private property. The final track map that hasn't been recorded captures the easements within the cul-de-sacs that I mentioned in the previous item and also captures the easement for the pipeline running east and west at the south end of that property. Unfortunately, the track map, which once recorded, will provide the dedicated right-of-way of the, of the cul-de-sacs and the frontage road. Until that's recorded, we won't have public right-of-way. So this is allowing, again, like the other item, for our, the proposed water line being constructed by the developer to be in an easement for us to legally own, operate, maintain, also be there on site at the commencement of work for inspection. Without these easements, work cannot move forward per our policy. There's been too many instances in the past where the, either the dedicated right-of-way hasn't happened because of failed obligations between the land use agency and the developer and then the district's left holding, holding the bag. So as part of our construction and project requirement, if there isn't public right-of-way existing and it's not going to be in place prior to the commencement of construction, we require easements. I'm happy to answer any questions on item fifteen and sixteen, if there are any. But essentially what's happening today is as a public agency, any grant of easement deed that we accept has to be accepted along with a certificate of acceptance. And that's what's being presented in front of the board today is a grant of easement for a water easement between two cul-de-sacs. And then the second item is for sewer and water utilities. That is the entire area, less the easement on fifteen, until such time that it becomes a dedicated public right-of-way.
Yeah, I, I think I'm a little confused. Arden, will you please play Vanna there and show me where he's talking about these?
These are the two cul-de-sacs right here.
Okay, so, so this.
The other line.
Okay, I got the water line along Eighteenth, the two cul-de-sacs are, so this, this ground is obviously already been worked. I mean, this is a area view. You can see that there's at least been some dirt moved in here.
Put his stuff right here.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, the easement's down there on, but is that Eighteenth or Fifteenth?
Or easement is across Eighteenth. It's not actually heading north and south on his property anywhere.
It is. Item, item sixteen covers the north and south and the east and west.
So all those blue line, we saw, wait a minute.
But I mean, but at this point, it doesn't matter. The pro- property is already under construction.
That's between the city and the developer that issues CUP for conditional use permits, issues.
Okay, Arden says it doesn't affect us. Okay. I didn't know if it was, it was already worked for maybe a, a prior project that fell apart or.
No, it's, so.
All right, thank you.
I don't have access to the packet. Vice, or sorry, Director Duncan, I, I don't have those items. I just, um, otherwise if I can control the screen, I would bring the actual, uh, the items that are certificate of, uh, or the grant of easement that's inside your guys' board packet.
Yeah, that's okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Any questions from you guys? Steve? Okay, we will move on to item number seventeen, contract agreement with B eighty-one paving.
Uh, you have seen this paving company before because they're the ones that we adjusted their not to exceed amount because we had more paving to do than we anticipated. Um, this year we are including upfront a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to say not to exceed these. This is the firm that, well, maybe I should let Danny explain it. Danny, I'll let you explain it. I do not want, I'm sorry.
That was fine, Arden. Thank you very much. As Arden was explaining, on an annual basis, we do go out to bid for our paving repair. The paving repair typically is for any leaks, water leaks, sewer issues, service line replacements. Uh, throughout the entire fiscal year, we will, will expose water lines leaks and will patch them back with a temporary asphalt. Typically, on a quarterly basis, sometimes more frequent, we take the current contract being contemplated here, the agreement, and we disperse the work to go ahead and keep up with all patchwork. So in a perfect world, at the end of the fiscal year, we've completed all of our leaks. This contract is, was, went out to bid, we received three bids. The way that the, uh, the way that we bid this is we had to put a quantity that everybody can bid on, since this is not, we don't have that quantity ahead of time. We don't say that, okay, this year you're going to do exactly X amount of square feet. We provide a quantity for a typical trench repair for what they call a T-cut, where certain streets under the city, certain streets of the county, they require us to grind on each side of a pay, a patch and do that repair. And it also includes striping. So there's a specific amount of, of square footage for all three of those items or linear footage for the last item, so that everybody has a, a fair chance of bidding. We are happy to say that B eighty-one paving is the lowest responsive bidder. The ironic thing is they actually beat their bid from last year. So the, the great part about this is their cost is less than what they gave us last year. And we actually are increasing our budget to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to match what our operational budget is for paving each year. So we're asking the board for consideration to award a contract to B eighty-one paving for the paving repairs for water and sewer projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two, for not to exceed amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete the project. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Oh, that's great. They're, they're half of what the next bid is. So that's great.
They are.
Yeah.
And they have had, uh, you know, the contractors sometimes may miss items, but on items that have been missed or maybe, I don't want to say unacceptable, but for items that need to have some additional attention, they've been a pleasure to work with, but for the most part, that's very, it's very, uh, uh, it doesn't happen that often. We've had, out of all the work that they did for our past contracts, there's very little they've come back on that we've had issues with. So.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody?
No.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Uh, so we'll go on to number eighteen, which is the contract agreement with RIC Construction for the well twenty-four electrical panel rehab.
Uh, yeah, Danny can give you the, and we did again bid this project. Um, it is a large amount of money, but this is a six hundred horsepower motor on that well, um, which is pretty much the largest motor you'll see on a well that deep. But, um, Danny, you want to, um, then do your presentation on this, please?
Yeah, I'll be happy to, Arden. Thank you very much. What I'd like to do is just take us back to fiscal year twenty twenty. When staff brought to the board a program that we wanted to implement, there hadn't been one started with the district for, for, since I've been with the district, is something that Osama Alzammar and the production team has started working on. And that's a, a new electrical panel rehabilitation program. We started that again in fiscal year twenty twenty. The intent of the program was to evaluate the condition of our electrical panels and motors and rehab up to, hopefully up to three panels a year concurrently with any type of well rehab projects. Those are preventive maintenance while rehab projects. So when we did this project, because of the sizes, Arden made a comment to, it is a large, it is a large six hundred horsepower motor. Why does that? Like, what does that matter if it was a three hundred horsepower motor? Well, the larger the horsepower, the, the, the more the equipment costs. For example, the soft start, which is a key item for this well for to ramp up and start and not cause an energy surge on the electrical system, is typically rated for twice the horsepower. So something for this well has to be rated at twelve hundred horsepower. That item alone, just that line item alone, material is over eighty thousand dollars. So that just puts perspective to the actual, uh, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar, that doesn't even include labor. This project is intending to replace the entire motor control center or, as I said earlier, panel box. The current panel box has been experiencing some issues. Majority of those issues are contactors. It's offline. And it is been handled as far as the expediting this project. We've expedited the design and the bidding and that's where we are today. We're ready to award the contract. The current panel being contemplated or being replaced, it was, uh, installed in the early seventies. And it's not necessarily weather tight, current, I mean, per current code requirements. It's, it can handle rain, it, it, it can handle, it's weather tight to that electrical standard. Today, uh, when we, for example, I'll take you back to well thirty-seven, when we built well thirty-seven, the electrical code for that well is what set the standard for well forty-two that we're currently building and any rehabilitation. So in a, in an effort to keep our repairs or our rehabs consistent, we're trying to come back to well thirty-seven, which is now what is going to be going into well forty-two. They require an enclosure that is absolutely weather tight. But it allows us to, you could actually take a hose and you can spray it onto the, the panel box. You can take direct flow. And it doesn't have, it, that's, that's the level or degree of protection the current standard requires. This project will take this, this unfortunately, this dilapidated motor control center or panel box and upgrade it, replace it to current standards. It is a brand new panel box. The unfortunate part, there's nothing within the current panel box that can be reused uh, over the period of years since the early seventies. It's had a mixture of different parts robbed from it, borrowed from other sites, and those are the items that we're trying to change. Um, other key items for this is, Arden asked me this question, or he reminded me actually, is we brought a well rehab, a downhole rehab, which also allowed us to retrofit the pedestal and the motor. At the end of this project, the great thing is this site will be essentially all new and that's a good asset for the district and it's, we will depend on that. And this is our fourteen hundred well zone. Well, we'll have this well and well forty-two once completed to provide water to the fourteen hundred zone and Dale zone, which is a big help and, and need at this point in time. So I am just double checking. I apologize. As I mentioned earlier, we did go to bid. When we went to bid, we received six bids. The lowest bid that's being presented in front of you for four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars was the lowest responsive bid, the highest being eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we are asking the board for consideration of a contract agreement with RIC Construction Company Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder for the construction of the well twenty-four electrical panel rehabilitation in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven with a ten, plus a ten percent contingency for five hundred and thirty-one thousand fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents and authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete this project. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
No, no, Steve.
Steve?
Uh, yeah, um, General Manager Jordan had mentioned that, that this well has a six hundred horsepower motor. Um, is that motor being replaced in this project? Trying to get an idea of the, the scope of this, is, is the, is the well itself? I'm, I'm reading through the line totals, trying to get an idea of, is this, is it like, uh, the, the last time we did this, we had to, I think, raise the, um, the casing a little bit or where the map motor mounts. Are we, are we doing that in this case? And, um, um, I don't see an amount in there for a new motor. So I'm assuming we're going to be just using the, use the old motor also, um.
It says electrical panel rehab.
Right, so we're not, what, then that's a, that's a half a million dollars? Or, or we're not doing a full well rehab? We're just doing an electrical upgrade?
That's correct. I was waiting for you to finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries. I, I just wanted to finish. I'm a, I believe I can, I may not answer them all in the same order, but I'll, I'll capture all your questions. As I mentioned, the previous project at this site was a actual well rehab, downhole rehab of the wet site equipment. The pump, the column pipe, the shafting up to the motor, which was also rehabbed. And as you mentioned, you're absolutely correct. The well, the, the discharge header, in this case, the pedestal, the concrete pedestal. Uh, many of these rehabs, and I know this is what the one that we're talking about, many of these rehabs today are, are, we're experiencing higher costs because we're no longer being grandfathered by the State Water Resources Control Board. Our current pedestal at that time didn't meet the, the, didn't conform to the, the, the requirements of the state. So we had to also adjust that. And that's what you were making reference to is the casing, as well as the piping, the above-ground header piping. That's what I was alluding to, that this project, if you remember, and that's why I wanted to bring it, was motor to wet plus the horizontal piping above ground, as well as the concrete pedestal that you mentioned. This contract, as, as President Wright mentioned, is for the rehab. For this amount of money, this is, the reasons for that are for, for those items that I said, this is a complete rehab. We are going to be going to a NEMA four, which is an electrical code enclosure. We are changing, right now, we're experiencing a lot of dust blown in, in, in items that are causing this problems. The equipment in there is outdated. The soft start, as I mentioned, for this size of a project, if we were to do something for a three hundred horsepower motor, we would likely be some, somewhere, a panel box replacement. We would likely be somewhere in half, the, half this cost, if not more than half this cost. The size of the equipment, the, the horse, six hundred horsepower motor and the code requirement to, that we have to meet today is what's driving the cost of this project.
So, um, it, I apologize for catching. So we're going from a three hundred horse motor to six hundred? Is that what, what I just picked up there?
No, not at all. I was just giving you an example.
Okay, good, good. And this is the well that we just rehabbed and that's why those, that work's not listed here. That's already been done. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, good. That's where my misunderstanding was. And can you tell me if this well is performing as well today as it was after it was rehabbed? Are you still as excited about the work that we did?
Absolutely.
Oh, good. Oh, good, good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, thank you Danny.
You're welcome.
So we'll go on to discussion items, number nineteen. Do we have any update on the regional?
Yes, Danny's going to, we're pretty excited, so far.
Oh yeah, the contract.
Yeah, well, we're getting very close to embarking on, a very big project, the biggest project this district has ever done, and, and, and it looks like, keep your fingers crossed, we don't have any indication that the funding has changed, so we're, we're hoping that it keeps going. Danny, do you want to give them an update, a quick update?
Gladly. The, the written report is in your board packet. I'm not going to read it verbatim. There are a couple of items I would love to add to that has recently, it's recently happened in the last week and a half.
Okay.
This, this project itself is being reported on in writing for last month, and we're also going to talk about a couple of items that's happened as of this week. So we, the final bidding package, we have finally, we have posted this project. It is out to bid. It went out on May eighteenth. And what's in front of you is a document that says the schedule for bid opening on the first of July. What has happened is, is there've been a lot of delays with the vendor pricing, and the vendor pricing and the timing to get the bid, was pushed to twenty fifth, to July fifteenth. And what that really means is, all the suppliers and vendors that are going to be, that would be furnishing proposals to the prime contractors bidding on this, they're, they're running behind, and it's a struggle, and there's been a request, and it just makes a lot of sense, given some of the circumstances with the volatility of market. So that's one change that's different than the documents in front of you. We have pushed the, the request for inquiries or R F Is that we refer to. They, it went from the eighteenth to the twenty-third, and then we're also going to go ahead and take that to the end of the month. It allows us to process, at this point in time, the well over a hundred and twenty-five requests for information, or requests for inquiries on this project. And we have to sort through those. There's a lot of vendors asking whether they can be accepted for, an approved equal. There's a lot of technical questions that are being asked by the prime contractor. This is a typical step in this type of project, so we're working with our, our design engineer, A E Com, to help provide responses to that. And it just made a lot of sense to push the bid opening to the fifteenth of July rather than the first of July. That really has no issue or no impacts to our, what we're working on with the S R F or the state regarding the grant and financing agreement. I'll cover that a little bit further down in the presentation or the report. The scope of work that staff is working on currently is another big item. We have staff along with consultant, our project management consultant, that is working on the support services, including project management, grant administration, construction management, inspection, materials testing, labor compliance. Also resident engineer, a lot of these items are, all require disciplines or necessary items for a project like this. The duration of this project is going to be anywhere from, up to two and a half years, not the actual plant. We've got to take ourselves away from the program. The program is the plant, the conveyance line, and as well as the septic to sewer project area, eighty fifteen area M two. So we are working on the scope so that we can circulate an R F P for those services. We're looking to, hopefully circulate that sometime after the first of the month. We'd like to see that team come onboard. Shortly after, we are looking at the received bids to help us qualify and look at a lot of those items as well, along with our team. Reported last month, just to talk a little bit more, is the regional board's approval of the final groundwater monitoring network plan. The, those were the three monitoring wells that'll be upstream and downstream of the percolation ponds for the regional plant. And since we got that groundwater monitoring network, work plan approved by the regional board, we are now working with our consultant, Envirologic Resources and T K E to prepare draft bid documents for those three monitoring wells. And we are currently staff, plan checking those. And we're hoping to complete the bid package in the next month so that we can get that out. That'll be another project that is a side project, if you will. That'll, that'll allow us to get that start, collecting the data for current water quality that the regional board likes, would like to see. And be prepared to also get a trend for what happens when we start putting our effluent into those perp ponds after construction. The bigger thing is, Arden was alluding to earlier, is we continue to monitor the progress of the S R F grant, the funding application with the State Water Resources Control Board. Great news is, we received comments from bond counsel, legal counsel, staff on technical. There wasn't a lot of changes. Lot, lot of recommended changes or required changes. Bond counsel was required to submit opinion on where, where, the status of the actual draft funding agreement. Staff worked with Arturo, to get that information, and we are, we are also responding back to some of the additional questions. We got our initial comments that which allowed them to review it back on June eighth. So, as I mentioned, I'm sorry, I just lost my, my place. So with that, after the state, the current state is dark, or hopefully that they will come back and we'll get a final funding agreement, which is not expected until August, but everything that has been happening thus far is all indicators that, this is going to hit the, the milestones that has been discussed and shared with the board in the past. We are very hopeful that we will see a final funding agreement in August. That will also come with the timing of the construction eligibility, which is the date that allows us to be eligible to start applying cost for reimbursement. Recent communication, since this written report was compiled, as we were informed that the internal memo has been routed, so essentially, while we were looking at it and providing comments back, State Water Resources Control Board was circulating it through the two units. The one unit being the small community's wastewater, which we're looking at, hopefully getting eight million dollars of grant from, also the other item is the groundwater grant is a second unit, which will also hopefully give us the eight million dollars in grant money, up to sixteen million, that you've heard us share in previous updates. Both of those units have reviewed our packet. They've signed off confirming our eligibility for funding, which is, it's not in the bag yet, but this is the closest that Mission Springs Water District has been to this funding. It is a positive note for this project as far as the funding goes. So everything is still leaning in the direction of, we're going to get great news, we're hoping for a final funding agreement. It's not an absolute yes, but it's a huge step forward in approving our final agreement. And another item that was shared last month in previous reports is, the final parcel map is hopefully going to be reviewed and approved in June by the City of Desert Hot Springs. Currently, that makeup of ninety-one acres roughly is made up of several parcels. At the end of this final parcel map, we'll have one parcel for the, existing solar project, one parcel for the existing well thirty-three, and the balance of that for the regional plant. So we're hopeful that that's going to go in front of the city council in June and be approved. The other element of this project is the conveyance line. The great news is, we are currently at about ninety percent completion. We are hoping to receive and start plan checking that in June. Consultant T K E Engineering continues to coordinate with the Conservation Commission, the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission for the approval of a required easement. That easement is along portions of, of Little Morongo. We're trying to get through that corridor so that we can bring that conveyance line to the influence pump station of the regional plant. So there is a requirement because there are, what they refer to as restrictive covenants on that property. And due to that, there are state and federal review requirements, and it hasn't gone as expected. We've had some good dialogue back and forth with Peter over at C V C C, and he'd hoped to get us a response by now, but, unfortunately, as I mentioned, the state and federal review, or the, those agencies are still giving it's look over, and we haven't gotten any update on this. So that's the update on the conveyance line. And that concludes my update for the regional program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Danny?
I, going all the way back to the, the actual construction portion of it. I know admin buildings and stuff like that are a small part of the overall price tag for this thing. But this year alone, lumber has, has skyrocketed. For some products, it's up two hundred and fifty percent. I know roofing materials is sky high, wiring. Once we get a contract with X Y Z builder or whoever, if building materials, labor, components, whatever, take a jump. Does the contractor eat that? Do they try to come back and renegotiate? What's the, what's your typical process? Are they the ones taking the risk from bid to completion?
They are the ones that take the risk. Unless there's specific language, there's a lot of things to consider when you're bidding certain projects or the volatility of the market. Sometimes there's specific language in the design specifications. But in general, you're absolutely correct, and that question is, the contractor takes the risk. They'll put projections in there. Sometimes there are clauses for any type of surcharges because of, say, fuel and things of that, but, Assistant General Manager Macy and I, we've, there's been a lot of finger on the pulse of watching what's happening, hoping to see what's happening with the commodities. There's a lot of indicators that they're coming down. There's been a lot of, we had a successful, and one of the things that we, we had is a, is a, is a pre-bid kickoff, and in that pre-bid kickoff meeting, there was a lot of reminders that this, hey, reminder, guys, this project isn't going to likely kickoff construction for several months from now. So keep that into consideration, what, what the market trends are. But in general, just to answer your question, those are things that would be on the contractor. There wasn't any type of request during the pre-bid walk to require us to put any type of specific language relieving that. So the type of contractor that, that does this type of work is, has to have the ability to bond for up to a million dollars, a hundred million dollars. And these are contractors that, these are the experts, so they know it. There's a lot of these types of projects, believe it or not, that are happening. Treatment plants, regional, not regional, but wastewater treatment plants, reclamation facilities, water, water treatment plants. So there's a lot of these contractors that have just finished up projects that are currently working on them. So that's the next big step, is to see where these bids come in on July fifteenth.
Okay, so we'll move on to item, yes, Steve?
I just wanted to add that a guy followed pretty, and pretty confident in his, expertise on this, is saying that those numbers are going to start falling, and the lumber anyway, and some of the, some of the actual, materials used during construction, those numbers are going to start coming down now. I don't know that they'll ever come down to where they were, but the importation is showing vast improvements from, for lumber from Canada and so forth over the last couple of weeks. So we'll see how that works out in the end, but, I feel pretty good that we're not going to get too hosed on two by fours like we would have if we had to buy them last month.
That's a good point. If I used to maybe respond to that, that's along the lines of what Brian and I have been discussing. We are, we are anticipating, it's not that we're pessimist, but we are expecting that, the cost may come in higher than the engineer's estimate, just because of how hot the market is as far as construction goes. But what you stated is along the lines of what we're understanding as well. These hundred dollar two by fours are just going to start coming down, some of the supply and demand for concrete, issues like that. The, again, the project itself is slated to start. We have to estimate ninety days after opening bids to ability to award, a lot of formality process. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we are going to be able to break ground in the month of December. That is the goal that we are having today, and that breaking of ground is likely going to be earthwork. So that even further puts us down the line, and hopefully those are things that are put into, into consideration and perspective on these bids that we receive. So staff is hopeful as well, but you're correct, it's not going to go back to what they were, but they are likely going to come down.
Yeah, sometimes contractors will put allowance item, where if it goes over the allowance, the owner pays. If it goes under the allowance, they get the money back. That, that happens too. But anyway, okay, we'll see what happens. But after the first of the year, builder's supply is, their, their guess is that that's when the lumber at least will be coming down. Anyway, okay, without any other questions, thank you Danny. The administration and corp yard, building update, so.
Brian, give you just a short.
Yeah, because we got a, we had a workshop coming on about that. Yeah, okay.
We're going to have a special meeting on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Very shortly, just, we have issued a request for qualifications for our architectural engineering team, which we reported to the board. We have received and rated those submittals. We've conducted interviews with the top three candidates. We are currently working with the highest rated candidate, to work out a scope and a fee, and we will be bringing that as General Manager Will just mentioned, on, hopefully at the next special meeting, that will be either at the end of this month or beginning of next month. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
This is not a good time to make a pitch for my desire to land, bank that piece of land on the corner of Palm and.
No, wrong time. Next time, next time. Okay, the workshop. Okay, so the consent agenda, does any board member want to pull any for, off of that consent agenda? Item twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three are on the consent, consent agenda. Dory, do we have any public that would like to pull one of those twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three items off the agenda for discussion?
No ma'am.
Okay. Anybody have any, any of the board have any questions? I mean, did I already ask that? I think I did. No, I asked you, wanted to pull it. Okay, so directors' reports and upcoming, upcoming ports.
Monday.
Monday. Yeah, if you have any, Monday, Monday, okay, I'll do mine on Monday too.
I had a report, a couple of them, if you want to do it now, or I can do it as the director's comment.
Well, I think some people are trying to get to the mixer, if I'm not mistaken. I think some of them signed up for that. We still have a closed session, so. You want to wait till Monday? That'd be great.
Okay, well, yeah, that's all right.
Okay. General managers' report?
All right, real quickly, you have my report here, which is, you know, always very complete. You'll see that I put, I'm going to give you a brief sort of verbal on some things that you might want to know. And then we'll have the financial report from Arturo, and then we'll do the public outreach, and Victoria will give you that, and we'll quickly go through it. So I'm sure that, that Arturo and Victoria will quickly get through their report too. Well, forty-two, as you know, we told you that it was, that we were doing the pump test, the step test. We're continuing to do that. And it is, it includes crossing too much trail. The test pumping will be completed by tomorrow morning. Unfortunately, it didn't quite, because of probably the dry weather, it didn't quite get down to the point where we thought it might. And if we do see anything that needs to be cleaned up, we get on it right away, so. And that's really all I have to say there. We have a letter from the Horton, we, on the Horton wastewater treatment plant from the regional board, of course. And you, we reported that last, and it's been reported in the general manager's report. We had a slight, little slight spill last in October of two thousand twenty. We're talking to the board, the regional board, about what we want to do next with regard to that. And, and again, another reason why we need to make sure we get this filtration system in, and we start looking at those, those percolation ponds. And that's it. Arturo, do you want to do the financial report?
Can I ask a question on that? Is the letter in the engineer's report, or is that something that I can see somewhere else?
The letter for what? The?
From the regional water board. I, I didn't read as closely as I usually do.
It is now, Danny?
It is not, Arden, and the reason, the reason it's not in the report, because we're reporting on May, and this is something that we just received on the tenth.
Right.
General manager is just reporting on that. If this is something that would like to be shared, I will work that out with the general manager.
Yeah, you just got it.
All right. I want to read it someday though. Don't, don't lose it.
No, sir.
Absolutely. We're setting up a meeting for the first part of July, so we'll see how that goes, or in July sometime, okay? Okay, Arturo, would you like to do the financial report?
Once again, good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, management, staff, and public president. I am going to give you a quick overview of the March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one financial, internal financial statements. And it's going to be. Um, and it's going to be basically this one summary sheet, which goes over the actual operating revenues and expenses. And as of March 31st, the district is still in the black, uh, 3.0 million um, with an additional non-operating income of 1.8 million. Um, and you can see the, the operating is basically a wash of 0% in terms of the variance. And the non-operating is in the negative of 80%, primarily due to the timing of the grants. Um, those grants were expected for the, uh, wastewater, uh, treatment plan that is coming along. Um, but we have not received any of that. We have to spend those monies first before we can request reimbursement. Uh, going down to the debt service ratio, as you know, many companies, when they decide to loan um, to the district, they look at how much we can cover in debt. Um, and that number is usually the requirement is 1% to 2%. And the district is at nine, um, times that amount. Um, so there would be no, um, issue or concern if the district went out after that, uh, expected debt for the wastewater, uh, reclamation plant. Uh, moving on to the cash, the cash for, uh, March 31st, it's at $37 million. Uh, of that $37 million, 31 million is restricted um, by the board, and the other one is available to spend of the 6.1 million dollars. Um, and here it gives you a quick review of comparing 2020 to 2021. Um, with 2021 having an additional 3.3 million dollars in cash. And I will answer any questions or any detail that you would like me to cover.
Questions?
No.
Steve, question? Okay, hearing none. Thank, thank you, Arturo.
Thank you.
Victoria?
Hi, good afternoon, um, Madam President, members of the board. Um, I'm not going to go too in depth on on the report that's already in the, um, General Manager's report. I just want to point out, however, the, um, Desert Hot Springs Library Grand Opening, which will be June 26th at 10:00 AM. Um, there is information in that, in in the report how you can RSVP to that event if you are planning to attend. Uh, also for, um, we have been reached out to to create, to help to provide water for the goodie bags. So, um, it's, it's great that that they reached out to us, that the county reached out to us, so we could, um, put our, our business card that you can taste in in those bags. Um, I did also just want to briefly share my screen with you. Um, the, excuse me here. Actually, I'm not sure what you can see.
See a guy drinking water? It says water quality.
Great. Um, so our annual water quality report, consumer confidence, uh, report, um, will be, um, mailing out on Monday. As you know, um, this needs to be in, uh, customers' hands, um, as with the good faith attempt to reach all customers uh, by July 1st. So we'll also have a Spanish version of this available on our website. And, um, so this is going to be similar to last year's report, is going to be a direct mail piece to all customers. So it is, um, the water quality report, which starts here on the latter half of the document, and the top part is actually the, um, summer newsletter edition, the Water Matters newsletter. And so, um, we have, you know, some CIP updates, a letter from the General Manager, um, a little infographic of how the sewer system works. Um, and Director Grouse, you had mentioned how, uh, it'd be important in print as opposed to just in social to talk about um, wipes in the pipes. So we had a little section for that as we're also talking about, um, the regional plant. And then, of course, um, drought, right? And so we want to start, um, letting our customers know also about rebates that we have, the, you know, UWP, Water Storage Contingency Plan, things of that nature. Um, I also did just briefly, what's the stop share, want to mention that, um, as part of the, uh, governor's executive orders that were released prior to the reopening of the state, um, the water shut-off moratorium will expire or lift, um, September 30th. Um, so that still gives us some time on that. And then, um, the toilet program is going very well, our rebate incentive there. Um, we had an inquiry from this, Mission Miracle Springs Resort to actually replace, uh, both their toilets and the Desert Hot Springs, uh, spa toilets as well. Um, so that would actually almost complete the program, which is great, because in past years, um, we've had to, uh, give some of that money back. So, um, that is my report, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
I might, I might just add that if you'll, the, the one thing that we do get Desert Hot Spring or for the Desert Hot Springs customers and for Mission Springs in general is we actually include the CCR numbers. The card we got, for example, from C, CBWD was just a reference to the website. So people would have to go to the reps website to see actually what the numbers are. And we get a lot of compliments from people that say that's, that's very transparent that you actually include the numbers, so we don't have to go any and that's, it's very well done. I want to compliment Victoria. I, I like this.
Good.
Thank you. Um, and actually, just, uh, really quickly, General Manager, um, you bring up a, a great point. Uh, this is the second year we're doing this, and actually, it also comes out of the strategic communications plan that we talked about of having more direct touch points. So, um, we do get a lot of calls, so we know customers are reading it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, District Council report.
Yes, just a brief report on some of the items that we've been working on, on behalf of the district. Um, as you know, we've been defending the district in the Padilla class action case. Uh, we are going to have a closed session on that today. Um, and that is well, I'll, I'll, I'll read those items when we get to it. And then, uh, the master meter case, uh, we're representing the district in that case. And then also the Desert Water Agency, uh, lawsuit. Um, and we're going to have a closed session on Monday regarding that matter, and I'll be providing you with an update on the Desert Water Agency litigation. Uh, some of the other items that we've been working on for the district include assisting the district as needed with labor and employment matters, assisting the district on contract matters. And then lastly, I was asked, uh, to look into the doctrine of incompatible offices and whether that doctrine would preclude a, a member of the MSWD board from also serving simultaneously on the DWA board. And there's actually a Attorney General opinion, and I'll give you the citation for that. It's number 93 dash 112, 93 dash 112, May 4th, 1993, and the defendant was David Sumner, S U M N E R. And I, I think that Attorney General opinion really answers the question for us. Um, the question presented in that Attorney General opinion was, does the doctrine of incompatible offices preclude a person from holding simultaneously the office of Director of the San Gregonio Pass Water Agency, which, as you probably know, is a state water contractor as well as Director of the Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District. And the conclusion of the Attorney General was that the doctrine precludes a person from holding simultaneously the offices of a Director of the San Gregonio Pass Agency and the Beaumont Cherry Valley, uh, Water District. Um, similar to Desert Water Agency and Mission Springs, um, the relationship is one, uh, where one of the agencies is entirely or almost entirely located within the other agency. And one serves as a wholesaler or state water contractor. And, uh, and I'm not going to read the whole opinion, obviously. Uh, this isn't an genderized item. It's just my report back to you, uh, in response to the request that was made. But, um, one of the, the terms or a couple of the provisions of the Attorney General opinion and a citation contained within that opinion was only one potential and only one potential and significant clash of duties need to be found to render the two offices incompatible or a potential for significant clash of loyalties. And so in that case, very similar factually, I think it really goes to the heart of the question that was presented. And as we know, um, Mission Springs and DWA have had, uh, conflicts in the past. Uh, we have a current, uh, conflict with the pending litigation involving Sigma issues and breach of the settlement agreement issues. And, um, I think, uh, if the Attorney General were asked, and and that's where it would come up, if somebody were, uh, on this board and they ran for DWA and they were elected, somebody could challenge their ability to serve on both boards simultaneously. And I, given the, the opinions of the Attorney General, I think it's likely um, that the Attorney General in that case would opine that there was a clash of loyalties and you wouldn't be able to serve on both boards.
Sense, I guess. Okay, thank you, John.
Welcome.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay, rest.
Uh, would that preclude someone from, uh, running for both offices at the same time? And then if we were elected to both, then, uh, uh, resigned from one, could they, could they run simultaneously, uh, running for two offices?
Are they, are, that's a, that's an interesting question. Um, and I think rarely comes up, because usually the way compatibility of office works is you, once you're installed in the new office, you lose the prior office.
Right.
I think I, from my understanding from the, uh, registrar voters, she would only issue two sets of papers. Um, in fact, I think, well, I don't want to try to guess, but, uh, and unless our attorney said that he was essentially, I guess, willing to defend that. But, uh, uh, that might be putting words in her mouth. But in my case, I would have to run for both. But most of you wouldn't have to. Nancy and I would, would have to run for two offices at the same time. The three of you would not have to, because your terms don't come up for another three years. And I'm trying, I'm, I'm just remembering that. And so John might be able to expand on that if he has a sense for a fundamental of it or not.
No, I, I think that there, I think our board, I think our boards are, our, our elections are in the same year every year, so they would have the same issue. And their seat would be up is the same time that the, the DWA seat that they sit in would be up, I think.
Well, there, there's two division, two, two divisions in the desert, in the desert. And Randy just got reelected, so he wouldn't be being, running for two offices at the same time. But I would, so I
Maybe not in 2022, but in 2024, I think that
Okay, no, that could be, yeah. But in my case, uh, it's likely that I'll be leaving the board in a couple of years. So you guys win. That's good news.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
I think, thanks. Okay, so thank you, John. Thank you, Steve. Okay, the director's comments?
Yeah, uh, we want to kudos to staff for the presentations that were given today. They were, um, uh, they were well presented, and it was a very uh, complex agenda. And also, I want to give kudos to our president for negotiating through the agenda in a very efficient and, uh, quick manner. Thank you.
Steve, director's comments?
On the, uh, one of the things that came up in the budget last, uh, when was that? I guess at the last, last, oh, we had a special meeting, right? Um, was about, uh, the, uh, amount, the stipends. And I had raised the issue that I thought that they, uh, weren't distributed adequately. In fact, this month alone, I think one director is getting uh, about 10 times what another director is getting. Uh, three directors are, are actually, uh, in that category, I think, compared to perhaps two, at least one. Uh, I'm, uh, I'm concerned that the, the public is getting a, uh, improper picture of what's happening there in terms of the way it's written in the budget. So since we now have the seat election by division, perhaps we could have a, a line in the budget for per division and what each, uh, uh, division is granted in, in potential and what is actually paid. Um, and that way, uh, people get a full understanding of what's happening. The, um, idea that, uh, one, one, uh, one director gets, you know, eight or 10 times the amount of money as another. Um, i- i- and it's being hidden in, in this bulk amount, seems to me that that wouldn't be, uh, a big issue, since it's so political, uh, politically, uh, explosive, you know? Uh, I, I, I don't want anybody to accuse me of being a freeloader and only being here for cocktails and, um, and run and quick runs across the valley for, uh, parties with, uh, people that, um, you, you wouldn't otherwise get to socialize with. I think we're getting a flavor of that today. Also, I'd like for the board to consider, uh, adding a one, uh, uh, meeting a month so that we won't have to have these, uh, packed agendas. Uh, I was rather rude, and I want to apologize to the president in an email that I sent to her. Um, and, and, but I, I really think it's time for this district to, uh, consider, uh, uh, doing what, uh, all well, uh, managed districts do, and that's bi, uh, bi-weekly meetings, uh, so that everybody can participate fully. They don't, won't feel as hurried at the end of the meetings and putting off this and that for the next meeting, because, uh, somebody wants to get to a party, uh, that they're being paid for, uh, through, from their director's, uh, uh, stipends to it today.
Same day.
It's, it's right now. It's happening right now. And I can assure you that there are things that didn't get to be addressed today at today's meeting because one director wants to go and, uh, do whatever it is that they do at these social events. So that's it. It just, uh, me and my typical irritations with, uh, the way, uh, you've done things here for so long. And, uh, it's just not, it's, it's not, it's, it's dishonest, uh, to, 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 to tell the public through the budget, uh, that, that, um, things are happening that aren't happening and, uh, hiding certain salaries.
So thank you for your opinion. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. That's just one person's opinion. Okay, so, um, director's comments? Thank you. Okay, so now we are going into closed session.
Correct. And the two items, uh, Madam President, are, uh, first, we're going to cover, uh, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. And that's one case, case number RIC 2003782. And it's George Padilla and Sharon Marino versus Mission Springs Water District. And then the second item that we're going to cover is threat to public service or facilities under Government Code Section 54957. Consultation with Gary Stertivan, Stertivan Consulting. And those are the only two items that we're going to be discussing today.
Okay, we will let Danny and Basam know when we're ready for them to be entered into the, uh, the second closed.
Okay, okay. So what, we're going to take a five-minute break now while we change everything. And I don't know how this is going to work with Director Grouse. Um, I think you probably go into the, I don't know, the meeting like we usually do on Zoom. I'm not sure how.
So we probably need to hold on until we go into that separate room before we
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break while that all gets done in. Okay, report, uh, item number 29, report on action taken in closed session.
Okay, the board met in closed session. The first item was threat to public services or facilities, Government Code Section 54957. Consult consultation with Gary Stertivan, Stertivan Consulting. There was no reportable action taken. And the second item that the board discussed in closed session was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, one case, RIC 2003782. And that was George Padilla and Sharon Marino versus Mission Springs Water District. There was no, no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Sorry it was so long.